Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 23rd, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Present.
Martin?
Here.
Pollock, absent. Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Colter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum.
I move to excuse Greg Pollock.
Support.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Pollock is under the weather this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move-
Would we like to add, under Presentations, E.R. County Commissioners here?
I did notice she was here, and that would be great, yeah.
I move to accept the agenda with the amendment.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to Presentations. Our first presentation is an update from the Ferndale Area District Library, and we have one of our great library trustees with us in the House tonight.
Thank you very much. I have just a couple of announcements and an invitation. The first announcement is that Ed Burns has been promoted to the Assistant Director. We want to congratulate him on that.
Yes.
I would like to extend an invitation. Saturday, March 7th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., we're going to launch our Fear Factor-style kickoff for the Ferndale Reads. The book is Bird Box by Ferndale resident Josh Mallerman. And during the Fear Factor kickoff, you can complete a series of tasks, which you will get rewarded points towards your free copy of Bird Box. So, we would like to invite everybody to participate in that. And the third thing actually comes with a little show-and-tell, which is this beautiful pop-up, pop-up book, by way of presenting the fact that we will have the creator of this in the library in May. And the date for that event is May 9th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. Paul Sabuda will be presenting a workshop lecture, which is cosponsored by Bookbeat and the Book Club of Detroit, and we want to thank them for that sponsorship. So, that is May 9th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Nice, thank you. Next presentation is Ferndale Public Schools, but I'm not sure we have anyone from the public schools with us here this evening. We'll move on, and if they show up, we'll give them an opportunity to update us. Third presentation would be the Downtown Development Authority, and I see one of our DDA Board members with us this evening. John, good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Mayor?
Very good.
Council. Most of you know me. My name is John McQuiggin. I'm the newly-appointed Vice Chair for the DDA. One of the first things that I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce Summer Reilly. Summer is in back. She is our new Project Manager and Customer Service Representative. She is a current resident of Ferndale, brings a lot of energy and passion with her to the position, and her main focus is going to be on data management and business relations.
Welcome back. Yes.
Main Street, Oakland County, and the well-known National Main Street Consultant who ran the Iowa Main Street for the past 20 years, was in last week and conducted our annual evaluation. Thank you, Melanie, for participating in that. A report from the MSLC will be, we'll probably get that in about two months. It usually takes that long because it has, first, it has to go to National, then it has to go to Oakland County, and then it gets forwarded on to us. So, as soon as we get that, you know, we'll be sharing that. This coming Wednesday is the Michigan Downtown Association Advocacy Day in Lansing. That's where we will be meeting with state legislatures to continue to build relationships and, with them, on state issues impacting downtowns. At our annual planning meeting in January, the DDA Board and Volunteers spent some time refreshing its mission statement, adding core values, and defining our top five goals. We are evaluating our action plans so that we are internally more cohesive by having all committees determine how they can meet these five goals. Our mission statement in March is to support and empower a vibrant downtown Ferndale and its community of businesses to be a destination to live, shop, work, and play. And then our five goals that we've created are to increase outreach and advocacy, to better understand, evaluate, and support downtown Ferndale's needs. The second goal, to grow the effectiveness, awareness, and participation in existing DDA and third-party events in downtown Ferndale. To advocate for increasing parking availability to grow business economy and improve consumer experience. To pave the way for development and business growth. And to streamline DDA operations to maintain effective services. Next thing is the Board will be finalizing its objectives for this coming fiscal year to meet these goals at our next regular Board meeting scheduled for March 12th, as well as we'll be reviewing our draft fiscal year and 2016-17 budget. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we need volunteers. There are many opportunities to be an active part of the continuing transformation of downtown Ferndale, so please, we welcome everyone and anyone to volunteer. You can contact us at info@downtownferndale.com or by calling the office at (248) 546-1632. Thank you.
Excellent, John. Thank you. Thank you, John. Raylan, I saw you walk in. I don't know if you were coming to watch the meeting or if you were coming to present any updates from the Ferndale Public Schools.
Actually, both.
Okay, great. So, why don't you come on and introduce the schools before. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Raylan Lees-May, and I'm a member of the Ferndale School Board of Education. And I just have a couple of announcements to share with you tonight, some things that are wonderful things that are going on in the schools. We have an early college recruitment program that will be starting the 2015-2016 school year. And what it is, is it's going to allow our seniors the opportunity to earn college credit while they're in school, actually, 60 college credits are possible. And they can earn an associate degree in criminal justice, thanks to the collaboration with our Ferndale Police Department, marketing, computer programming, and health sciences. So, the courses will be offered in the 9th and 10th grade, but first of all, it will be starting with the 11th graders in this year. Second announcement is that we have a Montessori program. I don't know if you've heard. It is filling up. It's going to be housed at Roosevelt Primary Elementary School. It's for the ages of 6 to 9 years, in first through third grade. And from what I'm hearing, we already have 15 families that are interested and have signed up. So, that's wonderful news. We also, I just want to announce that kindergarten enrollment is underway, and for the information packet and registration and residency requirements, you can go to ferndalschools.org. I believe that's this Wednesday, February 25th, we're going to have a Superintendent Advisory Committee. And what that entails is that the Superintendent is going to discuss the reconfiguration or the restructuring of our schools. There is one meeting at 9:00 a.m. at Harding on Wednesday, the 25th, and there's one meeting that same day at 7:00 p.m. at Ferndale Middle School. March 9th, we'll be having as a second community forum, where Plant Moran and Michigan Leadership Institute, which are facilitators for our reconstruction program, they will compile all the information received from the community over the past couple weeks, and then share and make suggestions that night at the meeting, and that meeting is open to all. This Saturday, February 28th, we have a district-wide open house. And what that is, is that it's an opportunity for anyone interested to visit all the programs in our schools, visit all the schools from 11:00 till 3:00, to hear what we have to offer. That it's a walk-in schedule, and you can get information, like the schedule, because each building has a schedule, at ferndalschools.org. Let's see, do I have anything else? That will be it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate the update. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Good. The next item of business, I, we have some resolutions of appreciation. We have a number of police personnel who are retiring as a result of an early buyout that we offered. This is also another opportunity for us to have, to have new folks join our force. But unfortunately, we're losing five longtime members of our force, and there's going to be an event in their honor this Friday, February the 27th, where we're going to present proclamations to them. So, I'm not going to read all the proclamations, because they're lengthy and they're different for each one, but I just want to express the city's appreciation and thanks to Lieutenant Gary Whiting, Detective Sergeant Patrick Jones, Sergeant Steven Jennings, Detective Kenneth Denmark, and Officer Stephen Carroll, who have served this community with distinction and bravery for a number of years. And we appreciate it, and we'll present you these proclamations on Friday.
Very good.
All right. And the final presentation then would be our County Commissioner, Helene Zak. Welcome back. Commissioner?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. First, I want to start off with our county executive, Brooks Patterson, during his State of the County, announced that he wants to cut the millage rate for a county resident of .1 mil, which equals $10 if you have a house appraised at roughly $200,000. So, the, there is a group of us, of which I'm one, we have introduced a counterproposal to that, saying, "Let's not give back the $10 or the $20. Let's take this collective $75 million over course of two years and invest it in fixing potholes." And, you know, we will, both resolutions hopefully will be coming before the Board of Commissioners. We've heard from a lot of residents saying, "Let's fix the roads. I don't want my $10 back. I don't want my $20 back." Collectively, it really could make a difference. And I do want to assure you, in the resolution that we introduced, it doesn't have details how it would be distributed, but I'm advocating that the money be distributed based on population and that it be given to the municipalities to decide how they choose to use their money. So, that's what, you know, the group of us, some of the discussion that we're talking about, should we have the opportunity to get this passed? And I'm told that there's a lot of interesting, you know, that people are interested in looking at. Been working on the issue, and I know this is something near and dear to everybody here, is regional transit. And tomorrow, there is going to be a training through this Harriet Tubman Group, conversation with Michael Ford, twice, you know, there's one in the afternoon, evening messaging. And the goal really is so that we have conversations in the community. We want to educate people about the value of regional transit before we hit 2016. And I do know that Mayor Colter is now part of this leadership group through the Harriet Tubman Center, and I'm glad to see Ferndale at the table. And we just need to keep talking about it. Obviously, you know, I hope to introduce a resolution strongly encouraging communities to opt in from smart, to set the tone, but to continue the dialogue. There is an opportunity for high school seniors out there, if you're watching, or the parents, there is an organization called Leadership Oakland that's been around many years that does this fabulous leadership training for professionals. And several years ago, they started a Leadership Oakland Junior Session, and if you happens to be a senior out there, senior in high school, I do encourage you to apply for this very special program. It's run intensively for a few days in June, and there's no charge, you know, for the student. I've heard it's a fabulous leadership program. If you're interested, applications are due by the end of March. You can go to www.leadershipoakland.com. There is a telephone number, (248) 952-6880. I'd love to see somebody participate from my district, so I can hear, you know, about their feedback.
And maybe you can give Raylan that information. Leadership Oakland is a very effective and worthwhile leadership program, and a junior program sounds like a great idea. Maybe you could-
I'll give you this hand.
Connect with our school board member. That'd be great.
I also want to remind individuals that we do have a Financial Empowerment Center, which is run in conjunction with JVS through the Oakland County Treasurer's Office, and I left Marnie some new cards, and it's one-on-one financial counseling. Our treasurer found that people with tax issues, potential foreclosure, also needed some financial counseling. And that telephone number is (248) 858-0624. And I do want to just show online new housing counseling brochures. They're spiffier, and again, Oakland County offers this free service to taxpayers. Talk about mortgage, tax foreclosure, buying a house, reverse mortgages, housing issues, credit issues. And that can be found online at the Oakland County website, and tell, www.oak.gov.com, and telephone number is (858) 5402. Fancy new brochures. Finally, the county is revising their TIF, DDA corridor improvement guidelines, refining some of that. And I don't know details. They claim they've been communicating with communities that are in process of things. There's another meeting. I will see what happens. It'll come before me in Finance Committee, and I will bring it back.
Would that be for, for future tests?
It would be future.
Yeah, not for existing?
Nothing, and anybody, one of the things that I ask, we have preliminary question and answer on this, anybody that's in the process of developing something, they are aware of these changes, and it's been communicated. I know that Farmington, Farmington Hills, even Oak Park, that's looking at creating this corridor improvement authority along Coolidge with Huntington Woods is aware of the changes, and there's no objections. Part of it is looking at time limit, bringing the county to the table at a later date, if you're asking for a second one, so they're aware. I don't see major significant things that will impact, but I will keep you abreast of it. Any questions for me? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right. That concludes our Presentations this evening. Next item of business would be called Audience. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address Council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you an opportunity to speak at that point, but you have three minutes. Come on up if you'd like and share your name and what's on your mind. All right. Nobody for Call the Audience. We have a light, light audience this evening. All right. Then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda, our items that Council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless someone from Council removes something from the Consent Agenda. Let me read those now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting held February 4th, 2015, and the regular and special meetings held February 9th, 2015. Item B is the approval to reappoint Dean Bach to the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending December 31st, 2018. Item C is the approval of the inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, and the purchase of a Bowmag BW900-50 tandem vibratory roller from Southeastern Equipment Company of Novi for $16,794, and that that be expensed to the General Fund Motor Pool Capital Account, and that was submitted by our DPW Director. Item D is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee.
I would move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Lennon. Any discussion? Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The Consent Agenda is adopted. Now, moving on to the regular agenda. Item A is a consideration to appoint Katie Wireman to the Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2015. Who wants to introduce that item?
I will introduce this item.
As our liaison to the FESC?
As our liaison. We have some open spots on the FESC, and we are very eager to have new people join and participate in what is a pretty busy schedule for the FESC this year. So, I'm just going to go right ahead and make a recommended action, and then we can discuss.
That'd be appropriate.
I move to confirm the appointment of Katie Wireman to the Environmental Sustainability Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2015.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Martin.
I think she's in the audience.
And, is that you? You want to just come on up and, pardon me, I haven't met you before, but-
We could talk about Mayor, Doc.
Well, we could, but you're here.
You could absolutely. Hi, I'm Katie Wireman, and I know Melanie through the Detroit Revitalization Fellowship Program, and also was invited to submit an application by Jennifer Young. My current position, I'm the Director of Development at the Belle Isle Conservancy. I worked in Washington, DC for four years with an architecture and engineering firm, working on sustainability plans for Navy bases in the DC area and overseas, and then moved back to the Detroit area three years ago for the Revitalization Fellowship Program with a position at NextEnergy. And there, I worked on energy efficiency programs, recycling programs, managed some CRESTI grants, and worked on some parks projects with the City of Detroit. I couldn't find a more qualified volunteer to sit on our FESC, and I'm very proud and happy to have Katie come aboard. We definitely need her skill set and insight to a lot of the things that we're working on that are applicable to your professional experience.
You've got a great resume. Thank you for serving.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Katie. Always very impressed by the depth of experience and knowledge that we have in our community, and your willingness to step forward and volunteer in that way. So, I echo those sentiments. Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is made. Item B would be the consideration of a resolution authorizing Councilmember Martin to attend the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference.
Well, I've been to several of these, and they are very, very informative. They can bring back a lot of information to the table. So, I am a supporter of sending the councilman to DC, Lansing. Oh, Lansing.
I too am a supporter of sending the county to DC, but this is me.
Seems like you're finding here, I'll make a motion.
All right. Plus, he needs the most education, right?
Yeah.
No, it is a good opportunity, not only for education, but also to interact with our state lawmakers and legislature.
Yeah.
Well, it's just a major resolution. So, I move-
That's what I'm getting.
Yeah. Oh, I move to authorize Councilmember Dan Martin to attend the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference on, when is it? March 24th and 25th in Lansing, Michigan.
Like tomorrow. Right?
March 24th.
Go, Mark.
Oh, March, okay.
He's in Golden.
I'm sorry.
Oh, they're from those.
All right. Moved by Piana.
You see tomorrow.
Do you support that, Councilmember Lennon?
Yeah.
All right. Moved by, and supported by, Councilmember Lennon. Any further discussions? No, in all seriousness, those are really good conferences, and Dad, I'm glad you were able to take some time out of your busy schedule to be able to attend that and bring us back some good stuff.
I've already asked Dan to attend certain sessions for us.
Yeah, I've forgotten Melanie's again. That's where the other side is.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Councilmembers Martin?
Abstain.
Yes. Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to our final regular agenda item for this evening is a consideration to set a public hearing on March 23rd, 2015, for the liquor license renewals in noncompliance. And who's introducing that item? Is that you, Joe?
That's me.
Or is that you? Oh.
Yes, every year, we contact all the CRESTI and club liquor licensees of their aspiring licenses on April 30th. This year, we also contacted other licensees who hold liquor licenses, such as small distillers and small winemakers, due to a rereading of the resolution. So, at any rate, we have sent them out. All of the different departments are compiling their reports. I have several reports already in from Oakland County Health Department, the Community Development Department. And tonight, we are asking to set the public hearing for Monday, March 23rd, for those establishments that are out of compliance, so that we can contact them and get them, hopefully, into compliance, so we don't have to object to their liquor license renewals.
I'd move that we direct that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, March 23rd, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. regarding the nonrenewal of liquor licenses, and that the City Attorney's Office prepare and have served appropriate legal notice of the scheduled hearing to any establishments that are not in compliance with the provisions of Ferndale City Council's resolutions adopted on March 28th, 1988, and November 10th, 2014, as attached, and/or those establishments that are delinquent in paying taxes for water bills that are due by February 28th, 2015, according to the Finance Director's Report as of noon, Monday, March 2nd, 2015.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Any discussion on this item?
Just the formality.
We do this every year. The list will shrink by then.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Select few, seeing them show up all the time.
Very good. All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Okay. Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That hearing is set. That concludes the regular agenda. Now, to call to Council. Police Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Your Honor, you heard me cover the retirement party, but I guess you guys need to mention it again, this Friday.
Okay.
$25 a person. That includes an open bar, and we are, it's open to the public. We'd love to have you there to honor our guests. 7:00 to midnight at Carlo's, and tickets are available at the desk. You can get them for one, maybe two more days before we have to give them a number. And lastly, we would like to announce that our own Detective Moore, who sang the National Anthem at the Tigers game last year, has been again asked to sing the National Anthem on April 22nd, when the Tigers play the Yankees down at the stadium again. So, we wanted to congratulate him. They sought him out this year, so it's quite an honor.
That's great.
So, we're very excited about that again. Very nice.
Chief, just for clarification, that is 10 Mile East of Mount for the banquet center, correct?
Yes, sir. It's on 10 Mile, right in the corner of Mount.
Yeah. Okay.
Chief Sullivan, anything from the Fire Department tonight?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we assisted Hazel Park with a fire in a dwelling that had lost power, and I just want to remind everybody in this extremely cold weather, if you decide to do any kind of heating inside your home, it has to be a UL-approved heater to go inside a building. These people tried to use a generator inside their home, which set the whole home and burnt the whole home down. If you use any motors inside the home, they have to be meant for inside use, and most gasoline-powered motors are not. The carbon monoxide would have got to them later in that day, and a lot of people become victims of that. Also, watch what you're fueling. Your heaters with kerosene heaters, and that has to be filled with kerosene, the proper grade, proper fuel. If you don't, that can be an explosive moment for you, too. And again, with extreme cold, if you do have potential pipes that are on the outside walls and that, you can just leave your faucet trickling a little bit, which we don't like to do to wastewater, but that will prevent them from freezing if you're not heating that part of your home or have poor insulation. If you have any problems, call the Fire Department, and we can assist you, or even DPW can assist you before doing anything extreme like taking a motor into your home. Thank you.
Great advice. Thank you. Kara, anything from the Department of Community Engagement this evening? Is that the right title?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am excited to let everybody know that we have a new Instagram account. The city has an Instagram account. For those listening who might not know, Instagram is social media application that deals in photography versus written content. So, it's an opportunity for us to tell Ferndale's story in a different way. It's also the fastest-growing social media application, especially in users under the age of 28. age of 28. So it might allow us to reach a different audience, which is always a good thing. We like to have every opportunity we can to engage and tell our great story. So we did a soft launch of this about three weeks ago to make sure that we could build up enough content. Did a hard launch today, so it's now out there. And we're going to start broadcasting it on our other social channels so people know about it. If you want to view it, you can do that online at instagram.com/ferndalemish. Or if you're on Instagram already and you want to follow us or you have photos that you want to send our way, then you can just use our handle, which is @ferndalemish.
Excellent. Thank you. Jenny, anything from the HR department this evening?
Through the chair, may I ask for just a really quick update on where we're at in replacing all those retired officers? That hiring process?
Sure. We actually, last week at civil service approved the eligibility list. We were very excited to present 24 candidates on that list. We've begun doing background investigations. The police department has this week finished three so far. We'll be beginning to extend those conditional offers to those candidates to be replacing the officers that have left or the command officers in the department soon.
Great. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you. Jill, anything from the recreation department?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just a couple of quick announcements. Coming up on March 3rd is going to be our second annual community night at the Ferndale High School that we partnered with the men's varsity basketball team. We, our first one was back in February on the 17th and we had over half of our league and their parents come to the varsity basketball game. They were introduced by the athletic director during halftime and they got to play and showcase their skills. We're looking forward to the next one coming up this Tuesday at 7:00, next Tuesday at 7:00. Just a reminder, the Kulik Center is a AARP tax aid site. Every Tuesday, starting at 9:30, we'll take the first 25 folks that come in now through April 14th. And then currently, we're gearing up for spring. We're currently registering for our youth soccer leagues as well as our adult softball leagues and that information can be found on ferndalem.gov. Thank you.
I want to congratulate you. We've had a number of really cold days and Kulik Center has been used as a daytime warming center and I know that's an extra effort on your staff, but I appreciate and I think the community appreciates that you do that. Jill, remind me, is it, it's only when we call the emergency, but it's typically at 10 degrees or below?
Yeah, typically we call the, we will open up Kulik Community Center as a Ferndale Warming Center. If the temperature, the high will remain under 10 degrees and if the wind chill is below zero.
All right. So appreciate all the effort in doing that and helping keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, anything else from the clerk's office today?
Well, I did want to follow up on our great new boards and commissions appointment that we had earlier tonight and mention that we still have a number of openings.
Okay.
So we are currently looking for applicants for the Arts and Cultural Commission, the Divification Commission, Board of Review, Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, DDA, the FBSC. We also have an opening on Housing Commission, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Police and Fire Board, and we need three members for the Sidewalk Hardship Commission. So anyone interested in any of those boards and commissions, please go to onboard.m i.org or the city's website and look in our Boards and Commissions section and you'll find out how to apply.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Joe, anything from the city manager's office?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, I wanted to provide the resource website that we have launched in support of the two ballot initiatives. This is just a general page on the city's existing site that is going to be the central point for resources for public information relating to the two initiatives that are scheduled to be on the May 5th election. Just a reminder, the ballot proposal one would be voters supported the renewal of the Headley override and ballot proposal two would be in support for a public bond that would go towards street improvements and park infrastructure. Again, both of these are set for the May 5th election. That website is www.ferndalem.gov/government. You'll find a lot of information there. There's charts that are both interactive. If you hover over the charts, you will find the data points. And there are a lot of frequently asked questions that we're assembling. The site will continually continue to grow and will continue to add more information, so please check back on it daily. Number two, the mid-year budget is scheduled to be presented to the city council on March 23rd, 2015. This is just the mid-year adjustments that will be presented by the departments. Again, that's March 23rd, 2015. And third, I wanted to take this opportunity to update the public and council on some of the measures that the city and the police department have taken towards supporting diversity within our community. We believe that the diversity of our community and southeast Michigan is a fundamental strength and competitive advantage for our region. The success of our city and the adulation of the identity we have forged as a city is best fulfilled when we embrace this diversity as a value and as a practice. I wanted to speak to some of the initiatives that the city is currently undertaking and will be undertaking in support of this identity. Number one has been referenced in the past. We are excited to announce the Ferndale Early College, the joint collaboration between the Ferndale Public Schools, Baker College and the Ferndale Police Department. As we've heard, as of early next year, in the September semester, the Ferndale High School students will start to be able to earn college credits towards one of four core concentrations in line with Baker College of Auburn Hills. One of those four concentrations will be offered in criminal justice. Our officers from our very own Ferndale Police Department will be involved in the instruction of these criminal justice courses. And I believe it includes a continuation option of to attend a police academy for the students after their 13th year if they continue to be interested in law enforcement. This program is important as it provides a new channel for exposing a young and diverse population to a potential career in law enforcement. Early-stage recruitment for law enforcement careers has been and continues to be a challenge for most police departments, including ours. Number two, over the next six months, our police officers and command staff will be working with a diversity training and cultural sensitivity consulting group that focuses on the public sector. This group is led by a prominent sheriff and the purpose of the trainings is to reinforce the prevention of bias in police practice and to help our team contribute to and strive to deliver the high-quality services to the public. Furthermore, the training will be required to attend by our staff to attend as well and that's all staff citywide. Thirdly, the police department has begun to contact other public safety organizations on local, county and state and federal levels to learn how technology, including body cameras, are being used and incorporated into certain levels of operations. The city is also identifying what channels of funding may or may not be in existence to help fund new technology investments that help support the interest of public safety. City council and staff recognize that being an inclusive community takes hard work and dedication to support solution leaders in our community who actively promote and engage these philosophies. In that spirit, the city will support ongoing programs and initiatives that are being brought forth by the Citizens for a Fair Ferndale and the Ferndale Public Schools that advances philosophy of Ferndale diversity, more colloquially known as Ferndale Pride. While we are proud of these advancements and measures, we do not view them as exceptional, but simply as supporting the mission and values that drive this community. Over the past few months, the city has been actively engaged in an ongoing conversation with the ACLU of Michigan. In September of 2014, the city received a letter from the ACLU of Michigan alleging that they had received complaints regarding racial profiling by police officers while conducting traffic patrols on Ferndale's 8 Mile border with Detroit. The ACLU of Michigan requested a review of general traffic citations for the period between January 1st, 2013 and May 15th, 2014. This report would reflect the driving population. The ACLU balanced the results of this traffic report against Ferndale's 2010 population census data and drew a conclusion that the Ferndale police engage in racial profiling during traffic stops. The city has stated and continues to state that we disagree with these conclusions drawn by the ACLU of Michigan. These conclusions are drawn by contrasting two completely different data sets. The first would be the traffic citation data, which reflects the driving population, the majority of which occurs on 8 Mile and Woodward Avenue, balanced against the static population of the city of Ferndale with no consideration of the populations of adjacent communities. While we disagree with the ACLU's findings, we will continue to promote and work toward the fulfillment of being the inclusive and welcoming community that our residents and businesses pride themselves on. And that is my final statement.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Dan, Chris?
Very briefly, your honor, there have been some changes to the state's Freedom of Information Act and those changes are going to necessitate some modifications to the city's policy with respect to responses and replying to FOIA requests. So I will be providing some information to staff with respect to proposed revisions to the city's policy, which you will be seeing in an upcoming meeting.
And Councilman Martin and I were at the pension board meetings last week and the attorney for the pension boards also mentioned that the FOIA changes will modify how they act and I asked them to make sure that whatever they were working on, they connected with you to make sure that the city has a similar policy across the pension boards in the city just so we don't have two different systems. So expect to hear something from the pension board attorney. Yeah. All right. Councilman Martin?
Two things. The Ferndale Community Foundation is about to release its annual grant application process and that should be out by the end of next week. As per usual, the grants, micro grants can be applied to up to $2,500 by an area nonprofit or organization within the city of Ferndale. We will be handing out the checks to those grants that we select at the end of May at Ferndale Pride, which is another event we're fiduciary for. Secondly, well, also within that context, the Ferndale Community Foundation is also working on a program for some larger, more programmatic grants that we'll be working with the city this year that will require matching funds but could signify a serious investment for the foundation anyway and what we've been able to do in the past with micro grants. So it's kind of an expansion of our offerings and I'm excited about being able to talk more about that in the future. And then lastly, the Arts and Culture Commission still has an exhibit here featuring Callie Blake's artwork. So it's up for, I think, a couple more weeks, so please come on down and take a look and visit city hall for something other than paying a water bill and check out the great art of this really talented artist, so.
Pay your water bill.
Yeah, pay your water bill.
Excellent. Councilman Lennon?
Yes, just quickly, Joe, you kind of stole my thunder on that, but there's a lot of information out there on social media regarding our two proposals in May. Some of it's accurate, some of it's not quite so accurate. So please go to the website Joe mentioned. The information is there. It's not as bad as you think. And I'm not going to get into everything right now, but please do your checking before you post anything. And secondly, in the last several days, I've been approached by quite several people of why we're paying an individual $130,000 for some, lack of a better term, indiscretions. And we are not. It is a separate entity that is taking care of that. We are not paying anybody that no money for being discharged from their employment. So I want to set the record straight on that.
The Housing Commission you're referring to?
Yes, I wanted to be a little more elegant. But you can say that, man.
Well, I think we need to be clear. The director of the Housing Commission is not an employee of the city of Ferndale.
Ferndale, if not, and the feds are paying or not us.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
These are the ones that usually just blurts it out. And that's all I have for a nightmare.
All right. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, a couple. First, I just wanted to express my gratitude to Joe. I think you're doing a really great job filling in for our city manager. We're halfway point before April returns and I just wanted to let you know I think you're doing a really good job.
I second that.
You're pulling double duty and I know that's stressful. So also, I just wanted to put it out there as a suggestion for city council and city staff to consider. A couple of things are going to be starting soon. Terms of the master plan update in the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission is looking at sustainability and as part of the update process, the master plan update process will be defining what sustainability means for the community. And I would like to add a policy area for the city council and the city staff to consider is to having affordable housing policy as it relates to new mixed-use residential projects in the downtown. This is for a long-term planning and that we're preparing for affordable and workforce housing. People can call it walk-to-work housing. As the regional transit authority gets underway and we look about how to create more equity inclusiveness in our region, housing is a great place to do that. And I think Ferndale needs to have a position on affordable housing going into the future. And then the third one is something a little fun. I am doing the Motor City Triathlon, the sprint version, on June 14th and I'm looking for other city staff, police and/or fire, to participate with me to kind of join an informal Team Ferndale. When I started and did my first sprint triathlon, I was on Weight Watchers and this was my little kick-me-in-the-pants to get going. And so I encourage those who are on Weight Watchers or just wanted to practice, you know, give themselves a new challenge to join me. If you're interested, you can send me an email and I'll give you more details. But I expect someone from the fire department and the police department to participate. I'm looking at you, chief.
The gauntlet is down.
So for my triathlon, that's running, swimming and biking?
Yeah, and this is the sprint version. This is not the Olympic distance. So it's a 500 meter swim, a 20K bike, which is 14 miles, and a 5K run. And if you all know, I hate running, so I basically walk it. So gauntlet is down.
All right.
Chief.
I have just one item this evening. As I think you all know, when I first became mayor, I created something called the Mayor's Business Council, which is an organization for our industrial and large commercial businesses to get together and share information, learn, interact with the city, learn ways to be more involved in the city and grow and improve their businesses. A couple of years ago, we decided that one of the meetings each year would be more of a networking mixer, if you will, but also an awards presentation where we give out awards to some of our major businesses. And this Thursday, we're going to be doing that again at Go Comedy Thursday evening. And I just wanted to sort of congratulate the four award winners from the Mayor's Business Council this year. For the project of the year is 965 Wanda. Jeff Denha, who totally renovated our largest piece of industrial property over on Wanda Avenue into a, put it back on the tax rolls and made it vibrant and a successful business out of 965 Wanda. So that's our project of the year. Company of the year is Progressive Metals and they've won a number of accolades and awards this year and they're doing a great job over there. Executive of the year, longtime Ferndale business, Gauge Products, Dan Finkowitz, who runs Gauge Products, is the executive of the year this year. And our entrepreneur of the year is Raffino Valentine from Valentine Distillery, whose business continues to grow and impress and doing a great job growing his business in Ferndale. So I want to congratulate those four folks and I'll see them on Thursday. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.
What time is it?
It starts at 5:30, yes.
My God, it is freezing in here.